Good evening. Hello and welcome to the April 3, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session and Public Hearing for the 2023-24 Budget. I'd like to recognize our board members, Mr. Sam Tredaway, Mr. Tim Furr, our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapicki, our Vice Chair, Rob Walter, board members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, and Keisha Sandage is joining us virtually. Can you hear us, Keisha?
I can. She can.
Okay. And our Board Clerk, Kristy Williams, along with our CCS leadership team and those from the public. So we'll move to 1.01 and I will call this meeting to order. Board members, we'll move to 2.01. In the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand as we say the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to 3.01 to adopt the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Lindsay, please state your motion.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. Is there any discussion about the agenda, board members? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Thank you. We will move to 4.01. The open hearing for input of the CCS budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024. So we will move to 4.01. Board members, I need a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Furr?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Furr, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now in session. We did not have anyone that signed up for the budget. Is there anyone in the audience that came in from the public that wanted to speak? Okay. Hearing none. Board members, we will move to 4.02 with the speakers. We'll move to 4.03 and we'll close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing to the public.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Tredaway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Okay, board members, we will move to 5.01 and Board Chair comments. I wanted to just say that as we look around, we can all agree that spring is upon us. In this time of year, when we're surrounded by just new growth everywhere, nature puts on a spectacular show of beauty that brings us hope. We, as a school system, are experiencing new growth as well. As our community continues to grow and evolve, so does our student population. With the beauty of hope and growth come also the hard and courageous work that's needed to take on the challenges that growth brings. Napoleon Hill says, "Strength and growth come only through continuous effort and struggle." I can assure you that this Board of Education is working seamlessly alongside our district leaders to address the new challenges that we face together as a team. We are united in our endeavors to continue to create a world-class education system for the kids of Cabarrus County. So thank you, board members, for that. We will move to 5.03, excuse me, 5.02, our Superintendent comments. We'll have Dr. John Kapicki. Dr. Kapicki?
Thank you, Mrs. Akok. So just a few announcements for some of the activities that are taking place in our school system over the next week or so. First, this week is National Assistant Principals Week, and I want to give a special recognition to all of our assistant principals and thank them for the jobs they do in our schools every day as they help our students succeed. As a former recovering assistant principal, I totally understand the stress and pressure of that particular job and what goes into be a good one. But hopefully, you know, I could be an example to tell you that you won't be there forever if you choose not to be, but I would not trade those experiences in for anything. Without question, probably the toughest educational job I ever had was being an assistant principal, but it taught me so much. So I'm very grateful for the work that they do and I wish them well. And if you get a moment during the week to congratulate them and encourage them, I would appreciate that as well. Tomorrow night, April 4, Cabarrus County Schools will host Hispanic Family Resource Night. This event will take place at West Cabarrus High School and will begin at 6:00 PM. Many community groups will be on hand to share the local resources available with our Hispanic families, and please plan to attend. And for more information, if you visit our website, you can find the information on the upcoming events calendar on the homepage. This is a really well-attended event last year, and it brought a lot of our community and showed the strength of diversity in our community. So I would encourage anyone that has the opportunity tomorrow evening to go out and support this event and engage with the West Cabarrus High School community and all the Hispanic families that will be there. And I thank our faculty, members, and administrators who took the time to put this event together. I think it's wonderful. I'd like to also thank and acknowledge and commend Dr. Bish and Dr. Williams and all of our Human Resources Department for their excellent work to make this past Saturday's Job Fair a huge success. As many of you know that did attend it, whether out of curiosity or to support or if you're looking for some employment, there were over 400 registrations that were there to attend the Job Fair. They had an interest in many of the open positions in the Cabarrus County School System, certified and non-certified, and it was an incredibly successful event. And I think it just speaks to the leadership of Dr. Bish and Dr. Williams and what they've been doing over the last year and a half to continue to promote our school system and to reach out and retain and recruit people in the Cabarrus County System. And we are doing well and making headway, so I appreciate that effort. I'd like to remind everyone listening that spring break for all traditional calendar students and Wolf Meadow will begin on Friday and continue through next week. I want to encourage our students and staff to rejuvenate themselves over spring break and return ready to have a strong finish to our school year. Graduation is right around the corner. And as a reminder, the Board of Education Business Meeting, normally held on the second Monday of each month, will be held on Monday, April 17 instead. And also Friday, April 21, as you see here on the dais in front of all of our board members, the Cabarrus County Schools Art Festival will take place showcasing visual and performing arts, and it will have a live display and performance, and it'll be at the Gibson Mill Market at 305 McGill Avenue in Concord. That event starts at 5:00 and runs till about 7:30, 8:00 in the evening. Always a good event to go to, and if you get a chance to come down to the Ed Center, please do. I encourage you and see all the wonderful artwork that is on display here. Bart Tolbert and his crew do a great job of promoting that event, so I'm very grateful and thankful to them. Then lastly, I know she's not going to be happy with me, but I have to point it out. She's going to present this evening, and I'd be remiss not to wish Dr. Carla Black well in her new position as the Executive Director of Middle School at the Rowan Salisbury School System. Sad to see her go, happy for the opportunity that she's going to get. Unfortunately, in the Cabarrus County School System, you know, we don't have enough positions to fill everybody's desire to move up and pursue their dreams and to lead and to take on bigger, larger leadership positions. But I will encourage everyone, you know, to continue to ascend to your dreams and your ambitions and remind you that you always have a home here in Cabarrus County. Also, it speaks highly of the Cabarrus County School System that we're developing leaders and others are recruiting them, much like we do in other systems. We have the best of the best here in Cabarrus County, and people continue to recruit our people. I won't lie, it's annoying. I greatly hate to see them leave, but it just speaks to the talent that is here. And, you know, as I tell, when you can't hold people back when they ascend to be in leadership positions and to better themselves and do better for their family. So I can appreciate that, and I support Carla's decision, and I wish her nothing but the best, but optimistically telling her that as we grow and get bigger, I truly believe there'll be more opportunities here, and we will certainly come after Carla Black to come back and finish our career in the Cabarrus County School System. But we wish you nothing but the best. So thank you for all your service and all you've done for our kids and our community. And with that, that is all I have. Actually, I do have one more thing, as I forgot. Over the past week, the Central Cabarrus Boys Basketball Team, and I know it's not always about athletics, but I think this is pretty special, they were invited to participate in a national tournament in Atlanta, Georgia this past week. There were two national tournaments in the country that took place this week involving, I want to say about 32 teams across the country. And Central Cabarrus Boys Basketball Team reached the final. Unfortunately, they had a taste, their first loss of the season, the championship game, but they represented themselves and our community and their team and everything about Cabarrus County in an exceptional manner. The score was actually tied at 50 going into the fourth quarter, and they lost by eight, but they did a great job. I did not see it. I know one of our board members, who is a fanatical Central Cabarrus fan, Tim Furr, was at the event, and I appreciate him going to the event and supporting our kids. And again, that speaks to the dedication of the board in going out and supporting our kids. But as I watched it on TV, the thing that kept popping up to me, the kid that was repeated several times, was these students were 4.0 Honorable Students. So it speaks to the academics as well as the athletics, and these gentlemen are credited to everything that is great about our system. So I congratulate them on a wonderful season, on representing us on a national level and for doing very well. So I just want to share that with our community. So congratulations to them.
Okay, we will move to 5.03, and our Board Attorney comments with Mr. Jay White. Hello, Mr. White.
Hello. I was going to talk about HB 219, which we have later in the agenda. Would you prefer me to wait until then and present or talk about it, or you may talk about it now? What would be the preference?
You can talk about it now.
Great. Okay. So, you know, House Bill 219 is very concerning, as all of y'all know, and y'all have gotten, y'all have probably been hit with a lot of things. The aspect of House Bill 219, I think, is going to be heavily litigated or should be heavily litigated because there are some concerns about how it's going to be implemented and how it's going to ultimately affect not only our school system but school systems across the state in regards to a disproportionate share of money going to charters to the detriment of our schoolchildren. And I think that when I say there's a lot of exposure there from the state is potentially it's like a Leandro decision because we're talking about having a lot of disparity in teaching our children and having the funds to teach our children. And I believe there is some, I don't believe, I know there's some concerns amongst y'all, and how do we do it and how do y'all take care of it? I would tell you that do not delay. Y'all have been very proactive when it comes to the children in Cabarrus County, and, you know, the resolution that you have is an excellent resolution. I would not delay it for next week because you don't know what's going to go for the floor, what's going to be voted on, and how that's going to be addressed between now and the 17th, number one. Number two is when you're talking about the finances and how the monies are going to be changed or moved from the school system to the charter system, is that creates a financial disparity. And y'all are penny pinchers in regards to what y'all are trying to do for all the kids that are here in the Cabarrus County School System. And when any monies are taken out, it directly impacts y'all's ability to financially provide for the children that stay here. And then if those children come back to the school system, you're not able to retrieve any of those monies. It doesn't make sense that they're able to, that a charter school would be able to pull from y'all's fund balance because y'all are being good stewards. Y'all aren't able to pull from their fund balance. So there's a whole lot of things out there. Right now, the bill is very concerning, as you know. Right now, there are some concerns, I would say they're concerns legally with the bill. The question is the constitutionality of it, how it's going to be implemented, but we don't know what the final decision is. So I would implore you to seriously consider addressing the resolution tonight. And the reason why is typically y'all allow feedback, y'all allow the community to speak. I'm concerned that if you wait until the 17th, that something could happen, may not, but something could happen over the next two weeks where it makes the resolution moot. So there are some litigation issues, there are some legal issues and concerns about the House Bill 219 that y'all need to be aware of, and I'll stand to answer any questions that y'all may have, but I would tell you, please be proactive like I'll always have been.
Is there any discussion, board members?
Just real quick on this resolution, as Mr. White has pointed out, we would stand to lose, it's hard to pinpoint the actual dollar figure, but reading the bill and then looking at the resolution and what you're proposing, if this were to hit our fund balance, our pre-K funds, our federal reimbursements, just to name a few, those funds and those balances and those sources of revenue for our district are in the millions. So I'm projecting, and I'm being incredibly conservative on this by saying you're looking at probably $5, $10 million upwards that we would stand to lose if, depending on how the bill was written and depending on what exactly was included in that bill that were to go through. So this is a really bad bill. It's already hard enough. Our CFO, Carol Herndon, and her team do a phenomenal job making sure that our kids get the services that they need through the fundings that we get right now through both our state, our state, federal, and local revenue sources. But to take any money away from any of those sources is tragic, and it would really hurt our district in an unbelievable way. Bills should not be written right now to take more money out of public school coffers. We need to be supporting public schools every step of the way. We stand here, we talk about mental health and student wellness and, you know, technology and making sure kids are prepared to walk out of here being the well-rounded young men and women that they are. And our faculty and our administrators and our parents and our community do a phenomenal job of that, and we're blessed for that. But make no mistake, we need to make sure that our legislators understand that we elect them and they represent us, and part of that obligation they have is to support the public school system and to make sure that we're not taking any money away. In fact, we should be finding more ways to contribute more money to the system to support our kids. Now is not the time to be passing bills like this. This is an absolutely horrible bill. So I just want to be very clear on that and to make sure, and I know our board understands that and has done their homework, but this would be tragic for our school district. And to be honest with you, I have no idea where you would get the money from if they start taking more money away because we're doing everything we can to maintain what we have, and we don't want to maintain, we want to grow and be very nimble and adaptive to find creative ways to make the most out of those resources that we get from the finances that we receive. To take anything away, again, repeating myself for the third time, would be tragic.
Ms. Lindsay?
Just to, I don't know, everything that I've read, it looks awful, right? But playing devil's advocate here, what is the reason behind this bill? Like, why do they want to do this and take money from us and put it into the charter schools? Because I'm not opposed to charter schools. I mean, I obviously think that we should have the, you know, kids should have the opportunity to go whichever school's going to do better for them. So can you just tell a little bit about what the argument would be and why they proposed this bill to begin with?
Well, I'm not speaking firsthand because I don't know, I don't, not in the minds of the legislators that proposed it, but what I would say is that they're looking, the idea is they're looking at charter schools as a different way, a different mechanism to provide a basic education for a child, and they're trying to figure out how to fund that because right now charter schools are not mandated, there's not a mandate, it's not a constitutional provision. So what happens is, it's a, I think it's a smaller segment that is trying to provide funds to an organization that the idea is a community that wants to create their own school outside of the public school system and outside of a private school system has a right to do or is able to do that. So they should fundraise, they should do money, raise money on their own if that's what they choose to do. But what they're doing is they're allowing that organization to piggyback on the taxpayers of Cabarrus County or the state to also fund them, which is not appropriate, and that's what I think is the problem is, they're trying to find a funding source for this, for this group is a concern.
Thank you, Jay. Ms. Escobar?
And Jay, just to be clear, and I talked about this with the CFO last, last time we met, which is, we're not anti-charter school. We give money now to charter schools. What will be in this resolution that we're talking about is explaining how this is going after more money than they've ever had before. So it's not like we're saying we want to shut down charter schools. We're saying let's give them their fair share, which has been established by law for the last 20 years, but don't go changing it and basically stealing from our kids.
Correct, Mrs. Escobar, and the concern is that if a child leaves our school system, then we're required to transfer the monies over. If that child comes back into our school system, we don't get that money back. So that is problematic is it creates a potential windfall, you know, is that there could be, not saying it happens, but there could be a recruiting where, let me get, do it, let me give you all the bells and whistles about why you come here, and then when you get there, you realize it's not the merry-go-round that you think it is, and it's like, I'm going to get a better, I'm going to get a different education that helps my child back in the public school system. Well, the money stays over in the charters, and that directly impacts the other 34, 30, however many thousands that are staying in. So you're right, that is a concern is, is this board has never said, we're not, we're shunning you, just we need, we each need to have our fair share.
Mr. Tredaway?
Madam Chair, I'd like to echo Mr. White's counsel on our timing. I know typically we would love to hear from our community, but I feel like the General Assembly's calendar is pretty fluid right now, and I think maybe, I feel like we need to get to that pretty soon. I know it's on the agenda, but I just echo that timeline that I think timing is of the essence right now.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have my hand up.
Oops, can we add the copy of this bill to the board docs if the public can read it?
If you don't, I can email it to whoever you want to in a matter of minutes so that it can be put up to board docs if you'd like, Mr. Walter.
I think the public would be interested in looking through the Busher bill we're talking about.
I'll send it to Mrs. Williams.
I think I heard Ms. Sandage. Ms. Sandage, did you have a question?
Sure, I've got my hand up. I didn't know if anybody could see it, and I didn't want to interrupt anyone. But Jay, can you explain to the public where this bill is currently in the legislature?
I would have to look that up. Give me a minute.
Okay, my next question is for Carol Herndon. If you can, so that the public has an idea of what this potentially means going forward, and just let me put this disclaimer out there too, I am not saying anything that I am against charter schools. I do agree with Board Member Lindsay that children should, children and their families should have the option to receive education in whatever capacity they feel is best for that child and their family. Public school is not for every child, and I totally understand and agree with that. But Ms. Herndon, can you help to explain why districts have a fund balance, what that is used for? Because me, I look at that as emergency reserve for if something happens that we are not prepared for, which that could happen, you know, at any business, every business should have a reserve. But I want to make sure that that, that I see that accurately, and if I don't, if you can explain to the public why each district has to have a fund balance.
Yes. Hi, Ms. Sandage, you're absolutely correct. That is the purpose of a fund balance. Just like any prudent organization, you have to have a reserve for what is unexpected or unknown at the time. And while it is not prudent to build a fund balance to an unhealthy level, it would be irresponsible if we did not maintain a fund balance that protected us from the unknown future.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sandage, your question was, where does this currently stand? I will tell, just to give you a brief history in the public, is that it was filed on February the 28th, and it went to the House, and it passed a first reading on March the 1st, and it was referred to the Committee on Rules, Calendar, and Operations of the House, so it's currently there. And like Mr. Tredaway said, is that the legislature can move very, very quickly or it could grind to a halt, and that's at the, that's at the direction of the, more of the upper echelon, but who knows what's going to happen with this? But time is of the essence at this point in time because what this bill does is, I think it certainly impacts the, every child's ability and opportunity to receive a sound basic education in the, in the public school system with the amount of funds that gets pulled out. So does that answer your questions, or is there anything else that you may need?
No. It's a mail ahead. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're moved to 6.01 and Committee Reports, and I know that Ms. Escobar has an update to give us.
We are going to be posting on April 17, the application for interns for the board. So any juniors and seniors who are interested in being a Board of, excuse me, a school board member, board intern, we will have more information coming up and out in two weeks.
Thank you. Mr. Furr?
Yes, I got a message from our friends at the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. I'd like to read it to you. The Cabarrus County Education Foundation is a nonprofit resource that advocates for students and educators of Cabarrus County schools. One of the ways they support teachers and staff is with their Think a Teacher gift catalog program during Teacher Appreciation Week, May the 8th through May the 12th. The Think a Teacher gift catalog is now live on the Cabarrus County Education Foundation webpage. We encourage you to check out some of the options. And as always, we appreciate the work that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. Ms. Sandage, did you want to give us an update on your training that you went to?
Sure, thanks for this opportunity. Board members, I just want to say how much I appreciate you all for approving my ability to attend this training. There was over 100 participants there from all different counties. The name of the training was the Chasm Summit, and it was a partnership between the Cabarrus Health Alliance and the Charlotte Area Health Education Center. There were several breakout sessions. Initially, we started with a presentation from The Sun Project, which is a local project here that helps mothers who are pregnant and they have children keep their baby when they are addicted to opiates. If you want more information about The Sun Project, feel free to reach out to me. There was just a panel discussion. They had peer supports that were certified to help mothers that had already went through the program and that had graduated from the program and are doing well to work with the mothers who are in the program currently and may just need some support from someone who understands. There was one breakout session that talked about equity and leadership, and the title was, What's Love Got to Do With It, put on by a provider here in Mecklenburg County, and they talked about leading with love. When you think about love in the workplace, it doesn't seem appropriate, it seems too intimate, but it absolutely speaks to creating an atmosphere of safety. It talked about love isn't often associated with leadership, and, you know, it makes us want to be curious about why we love at home, you know, we love each other in our communities. Why would we not love our, the people who we work with in our workplace? And we've got to change the view on that, is what they, you know, cautioned us to do, and think about it as an innate complex and a way to spark conversations within the workplace. The next thing that I, a breakout session I had was called North Carolina Care 360. A lot of information there, but what I really wanted to point out was they have some K-12 grants that I was very interested in. Right now, those grants are being provided to Buncombe County, Durham County, Mecklenburg County, and Wake County. And the grants seem like they center around the ability to connect the community to, you know, like health resources, which could be mental health, you know, substances and physical health. So that was why I was interested in learning more about that. They said that they do kind of this, you know, full-ganit bird's eye view of the state to help them identify which districts may benefit from these grants. And so, Dr. Kapicki, I wanted to talk with you a little bit more about that to see how we could get Cabarrus County included in those, especially for additional funding around mental health and... around mental health and substance use. If anybody wants any additional information, I could probably talk 10 more minutes about all of the things that I've learned during that training. I would be willing to talk via phone, or meet for lunch, or whatever, have you, and if board members have questions, I can take those now.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Sandage? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sandage, and Board Members, for all your dedication to the committees that you serve on. We appreciate that. With that being said, we'll move to 6.02 with our budget update, and we'll have Ms. Carol Herndon to the podium. Welcome, Ms. Herndon.
Hello. Hi, Board. I have not received any questions from the Board since our presentation last Monday night on March the 27th, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions this evening. I did want to bring attention to the Board and to the public that we have added some information in the appendix that just provides some additional justification and details behind some of the ask, partially because we have to start preparing that at the request of our county, and we had a lot of it done already, so we thought it would be good to go ahead and pop it into the appendix. But it's there for your reference, and certainly for the public to look and see additional details around our request.
Is there any discussion, Board Members, about the budget update that we have?
Did we find out what the fund balance was for the county?
I have not. I'm still working on that. It's at the top of my to-do list. I have not, I have not found that yet. I've heard 15%, but I haven't gotten the actual dollar amount, but I'm still working on that, as well as identifying our one-time cost.
Thank you.
I know, I'm starting like a broken record here, but I still want to make sure we're providing a specific acts around mental health and substance use funding from the county, or giving clarity on what the intended purpose of Commissioner Shu's comment was.
Thank you, Ms. Sandage. I appreciate that support, and I will make sure that I get some clarity around Mr. Shu's comments for you, and we can talk about that, and we can talk about the possible grant opportunities that exist for Cabarrus County from your attendance at the workshop. So I thank you for that comment, and we are on the same page for that.
Thanks.
Any other comments, Board Members?
Yeah, if I may, the fund balance question was asked of me. I'm the one that, I will get that for you. I'll have that for you tomorrow, so I'll make sure that you get that. So that request was made of me, I'll make sure I get that. That's a good question, I'll make sure that I get that, but that, that was requested of me, so I'll make sure I take care of that, so thank you.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll move to 4.04, our Program Choice Updates with Ms. Sarah Reeves. Welcome, Ms. Reeves.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kapiky. Ms. Black is actually going to be joining me as well. Awesome. So we are just here today to share a little bit about some programmatic review that we have done within our Program Choice Schools, and wanted to update you on our process, as well as bigger picture around visioning, and the bigger conversation around district realignment as we move forward. So I just wanted to start with a recap of the purpose around Program Choice. It sounds silly, but sometimes it helps to go back to the original intent and vision of programmatic theming in Cabarrus County schools. As we talk about choices, it relates to public schools, charters, and privates, Program Choice fits in with trying to find the best possible fit for a student. And so as you can see here, Policy 4154 specifically outlines why we have Program Choice, and that has been our guiding North Star, as we have had this conversation with community members around programmatic review. And so as we begin to think about next steps, one of the biggest things that we really wanted to have a conversation around is that many of our programs have existed in our schools for over a decade. And so as we shared last week, in order to be able to sustain Program Choice, this actually comes from local dollars. This is not funded at the state or the federal level, and therefore, we feel as though we not only have a duty to our community as it relates to being able to offer programs, but also a duty fiscally to our community to make sure that we're doing some reevaluation, and really gauging, do the programs in those communities serve the students the way they intended to? Is the participation rate there? Is the achievement rate there? And so that, working alongside The Portrait of a Graduate, which has been released, has really helped us to be able to align around our strategic plan, and where we want students to be as it relates to preparedness for post-secondary opportunities. And so right now, we are proud that we have 16 choice programs throughout the county. One of the things I would say is, this is a tremendous source of pride for our community as it relates to the different programmatic themes that we offer, that help engage, and it really allows schools to specialize in a way that they might not otherwise be able to do. I always use the example of STEM. We have STEM integration happening in all of our schools across this district. We use engineering as elementary practices in our elementary schools, but in STEM school specific, we end up having enhancement programs that allow them to focus more on the theme through, following through with processes like the STEM School of Distinction, where they're using a rubric by the state, providing comprehensive opportunities with post-secondary alignment, field trips, extracurricular opportunities. The same would be true with fine arts. So for example, if you look at the Royal Oak School of the Arts, you're going to see multiple arts performances throughout the course of the year. You will not necessarily see that in every single school, so it allows them to get really good as it relates to professional development training and thematic programming to be able to best serve students. And so as we started this year, we really wanted to take a moment to do some programmatic review and feedback. One of the things, I met with all of you earlier this year, and had some conversations around our desire to do some programmatic feedback, to really be able to align, what is our return on investment with the programs that we currently have? Are we looking at the data to drive our decisions? And then arguably, if programs aren't serving schools well, can we take a step back to be able to reevaluate and see what opportunities might exist in the future that don't currently exist in Cabarrus County schools? And so through that process, we, we first started with the review and analysis of data. We looked at student participation data, we looked at academic achievement data, we looked at students that were attending that programmatic theme that lived both in and outside of the school zone, to be able to best determine, where do we feel really confident programs are serving schools very well, and where are we getting very candid feedback, starting with the building-level principal, that have asked us to say, hey, we really think that we need to review the program at this school, because perhaps the intent of the program is no longer serving this community for X, Y, or Z reason. And then from there, we started really soliciting stakeholder feedback, because we felt very firm in the decision that this had to be a community-level decision. This could not be made by myself, or Ms. Black, or Dr. Kapiky. We really needed to solicit the community's feedback, as well as the staff's feedback around what is best for this school community, given the current data that we have, as well as what we are looking forward to in terms of alignment to the strategic plan and the Portrait of a Graduate. From there, principals and Ms. Black hosted parent-community forums, we worked with school improvement teams around programmatic review, we held staff meetings, we did school newsletters.
Pop-up visits.
Yeah, pop-up visits, you name it, because we wanted to make sure that no one was caught off-guard with even the dialogue around a programmatic review. One of the things that we shared with our principals last week is that this is going to happen for every school in this district that is a program choice, because I firmly believe that in order for me to get up in front of you all and propose a local budget that includes a lot of resources and money allocation, we have to be, feel really good that that program is serving that community in the interest of all of our students. And so from there, there were several recommendations or programmatic updates that we have made. And so the first of which is that, which we've already kind of shared that we were investigating, is Irvin and Concord Middle will be transitioning from IB to Global Leader starting in the fall of 2023. This will allow them to maintain the global principles and the rigorous core instruction that we have intended, but it does not necessarily keep them in the box of having to go through the reauthorization process, following certain master scheduling constraints, things that have not allowed them to serve their students in the best interest of the community that they are serving, and also gives some flexibility around taking those Global Leader competencies to better align to not only the strategic plan, but the post-secondary interest of the students that they serve. The next recommendation is going to be transitioning Weddington Hills from dual-language and IB to IB. So the goal here is that they become the premier IB elementary school, allowing them to singly focus on this theme. When you have multiple programs in a school, very candidly, it can become a lot as it relates to competing professional development priorities, requirements through reauthorization, and working with two different agencies. And so as a result, the good news is, when you have interbaccalauria, you still have a language component, so that would not go away, but the full immersion experience is going to be transitioned out, so that they can focus on interbaccalauria. The next recommendation is just continuing the programmatic review at Cabarrus Virtual Academy. So one of the things that we mentioned is that we're getting some data right now that is showing that perhaps the virtual learning environment for some of our earliest learners is not serving them the way that we would like. Specifically, a good example is in kindergarten, North Carolina has identified the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory to be an anecdotal observation of the student, and how they collaborate with peers, how they work with manipulatives, how they cut and use scissors. All of those things are incredibly difficult to do in a virtual environment, when that student may not be exposed to grade-level peers. And so as a result of that, we feel like we would like to do a more in-depth analysis and postpone enrolling any new kindergarten students in the fall of 2023. That will give us some time to be able to really do a deeper dive into the analysis, while also honoring the students that are currently in attendance at Cabarrus Virtual Academy. And then last but not least, transitioning Wyancoph Elementary from STEM in dual-language to just dual-language. So again, multiple programs in a school, when you are onboarding staff and you have competing priorities, it is incredibly difficult. And so as a result, we really want to be true to who we say we are, and when we're advertising a program, we want to make sure that that program is not only happening in every single classroom across the school, but it allows the school to have a laser-like focus when it comes to school improvement planning processes, data analysis, those types of things to be able to best support. So Karma has done a tremendous job with working with the stakeholders and the principals. She has spoken with all the principals that have been impacted within the last 48 hours, just to make sure that they are up to date on the programmatic recommendations. And so I'd love to just open up the floor to any questions that you all may have.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for all this work and for the explanations. Just to clarify some things, so Global Leaders, I'm not familiar with that. Is there some sort of accountability, or is some sort of certification that the school's still going to have to go through, even though it's not IB?
Yes. So it's, it's less intensive in terms of restrictions around master scheduling. So for example, some of these schools are pursuing advanced teacher roles and things like that, so it's going to allow them to do that. But it is a state designation through NCDPI that would be working with the schools. The great news is, they get to keep the rigorous instruction, they get to keep the global competencies, but it is not as intense as the reauthorization process through IB. And so with some of the things that we're trying to do with the strategic plan, in terms of really expanding impact and teacher career ladders, this allows for that without having to be in the box within reauthorization.
Okay. I have a list, so hold on. Weddington, what was the language that, that is offered at, at Weddington right now?
Spanish.
Spanish. So for parents out there that have a kindergarten, or rising kindergartner, if they can't get it at Weddington, where can they go?
Yes, so they would go through the Program Choice selection in kindergarten, and their dropdown menu will offer the school of which they are currently zoned for. So they would still be able to get language, it would just no longer be at Weddington Hills.
Okay, so they can still apply to Program Choice, and we have it at Farr Elementary? I know.
We have it at Farr, we have it at Rocky River, we have it at Irvin. So, and that's the key, in all of these programmatic themes, it is not saying you don't get this opportunity. It just means that they will have to apply for another school that offers that program.
Got it. And so similar question with Wyancoph. So if you're taking away STEM from Wyancoph, we still have STEM where else?
Yes.
I would like to speak to that, because it's a great question. First of all, just to piggyback on what Sarah said earlier, is that we want to make sure that everyone knows that our schools know the importance of STEM integration within all of our schools. And we like to say that, and we articulate that on purpose, because that's what we want to continue to see at Wyancoph, right? But the STEM program in and of itself is not going to be housed there as a STEM option for students to select from outside the Wyancoph district, if that makes sense. They'll still have opportunities to take STEM at other STEM elementary schools. For example, Beverly Hills, you know, or Brown McAllister, where there's space. We've allowed, if you go to our website right now, for parents to choose from other schools that have availability for them to select for kindergarten next year in the area of STEM.
Okay. So I just want to make it clear to the public that you're not eliminating choice, or these programs aren't disappearing from Cabarrus County. It's just that those schools, we're going to specialize, instead of offering two, we'll offer one, so that you're making sure that the quality is, is there.
Exactly. Not only quality, but I would also say, community request. So for example, in many of these recommendations, we had one or two students signed up for the program initially. So the community desire for those programmatic themes were not necessarily there. So when parents were selecting, in fact, we had several conversations with principals that were having to go door-to-door and call community members. They were apprehensive, but chose to select into the program, and we said, you know, we've got to be very clear that we can do our due diligence in educating parents about all the opportunities within programmatic theming, but if that is not their wish or desire for their child, they need to choose what is best for their child. And so as a result, in order to be fiscally responsible, it is very difficult to justify programmatic costs when you've got five students enrolled in a program.
So speaking of that, so Program Choice, for anyone who's never applied, you, you have to do it ahead of time. You get, you get in to certain schools, and then you have to accept or deny that acceptance. And so for the five that have maybe been placed in a program, have they found, have they been given a new home?
We have reached out to the families of those that applied for programs that are going to be shifting to other schools, and let them know that these are the options available to you. That's probably one of the best parts about the process, even though it's kind of been a little tedious at times, is just hearing from the parents. In most cases, the parents have been happy to know, I still have this as an option. I just will need to go to another school. So we've done that in those cases.
Okay, so they're not closed out? They still get to, if they want that choice, they're still going to get it, even if it's not offered at the school they thought?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Farr?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember, basically, and I'm glad Ms. Black's here, because she knows what she's talking about. I know Sarah does, too, but like, if you're in a middle school, say CC Griffin, which I'm familiar with, that part of the town, so you're going to go to the STEM program at Central Cabarrus, right? So there's a application process, correct? Is this automatic? Or do you turn people down? Or what is our standards?
It's all of that, Mr. Farr, and thank you for the vote of confidence. I would say to you is that what we have done this past year, and I could speak for my time here, is we have not allowed grades, for example, to be a determining factor in and of itself, just by itself. It's the whole child. Is this child interested in this program, first of all? We don't do interviews, as we do at the Early College, for example, at all of our schools, but let's speak in reference to Central Cabarrus. We want to make sure that STEM students are accessing those STEM seats. So there is a way that STEM students that are at J.M. Freeze, or at CC Griffin, they're probably going to give this, that group of students first dibs, so to speak, into those seats where there's room. Central is one of the best STEM programs in the state of North Carolina, we know that, and the seats are limited. It's usually a lot of requests for Central Cabarrus. But we do look at cases where students may not have the complete profile, but the school believes this is a good fit for that child, and it's a good area of study for them, so that's what we.
That's good. That's what was really important, that like both schools, CC Griffin and Central, feels like the kid will be able to make it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thanks for the update on, on that. Couple, I guess, questions or concerns. If we're removing the IB from the, or Irvin Concord Middle, does that mean we're essentially phasing out the IB from Concord High?
That's a great question. No, sir, that does not mean that. So one of the interesting things about interbaccalauria is that it doesn't necessarily indicate that you have to have a pipeline feeder. In fact, if you learn a little bit about the historical context around Concord, it started with Concord High. There was not originally, you know, well, I was going to say, some historical knowledge. So I would say, the best way to, I can describe it to someone, is it really is like an AP or an honors. And in fact, most students that you see that are taking the IB track at Concord High have not necessarily gone through the feeder of IB, most of which have actually gone through the STEM feeder to get to IB. So... So high school and IB just in general operate a little bit differently. So it is not uncommon, even with Interbaccalauria as an organization, they will say the vast majority of students that start in ninth grade have not had previous IB experience.
And I would just only add to that, that the numbers at Concord High School, students requesting IB that are both within the Concord High School zone and outside of the Concord High School zone are strong. So when we say we listen to stakeholder feedback, that was one big determining factor, that people in that community really wanted it there.
That's good to know, thank you. Thank you for giving that update. To language immersion, so we have special teachers that come to us to teach these classes, right?
Yes, sir.
Are we eliminating some of those positions? How is that working?
So not necessarily. In fact, a lot of it is repurposing or potentially if someone is transitioning out, it is just that we're not rehiring for that position within Participate, which is the organization that we currently use to partner with teachers. The other thing that I think is really important to note, very candidly, is having a conversation around the number of dual-language classrooms that we have across the county. We are actually growing programs right now. So you'll see that we're actually adding fifth grade in several of our schools. So Dr. Bish has been tremendous. We have been working alongside her through this entire process. So if there are ever any staffing implications, is it related to what the community said around programmatic recommendations? We worked in conjunction with Human Resources to make sure that we anticipated any of those changes before they happened.
Still related, I guess related to that though, if you're in a dual-language immersion, you're expected to stay in that program with the same group of kids from kindergarten to first to second to third. And if we're just pulling the rug out there, if they're in fourth grade or something and saying, sorry, next year you just have to go to a different school and find different friends.
No, sir.
I mean, that's the same issue we're going to have when we do the redistricting. But how are we handling that? I mean, that's kind of a shock. Do we let them finish, phase out?
Yes, sir. So all of these recommendations are phasing out. So you'll notice in our recommendations, it starts with just kindergarten. So for example, and I'm sorry, this wasn't super clear in this slide, but essentially it would be in Wyanc, excuse me, in Weddington, it would just no longer to be filling the kindergarten seats. They would stay, and I apologize, thank you for pointing that out. So they would stay in first through fifth grade. And as I told Dr. Kapiki, this is going to be a slower transition, but we owe it to the families in the community that selected this program choice to be able to allow them to exit out of the program.
Okay, thank you for making that clarification.
Thank you for the question.
Just the last part of that was, you know, all these changes that we have with program choice do affect our redistricting and we really need to work with that consultant on our plans so they can kind of incorporate some of that into their forecasting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other question, board members? Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you, guys, for working so hard on this. I appreciate it. I do want to kind of shift gears a little bit and talk about the Virtual Academy. So I have heard some concerns about the Virtual Academy being unable to change their program to kind of adapt to some students that may not be as successful in that program. I'm just curious, I haven't really seen any numbers on the Virtual Academy. Meaning, look, we all know that a lot of students didn't do very good during COVID, during virtual learning. And so I'm happy that we do have this as an option for kids that do well with virtual. But I haven't really seen any data on it, on how these kids' grades look as far as, you know, is it successful? Is it becoming successful? Or do we need to make some changes to make it more successful? Do we need to give them more leeway to be able to change the curriculum? Can you guys speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think there's really two interesting things about Cabarrus Virtual Academy. So you'll see students that are full-time, 100% enrolled in CVA. And then you also see students that may be dual-enrolled. So they are enrolled in a traditional comprehensive high school and then they are taking a CVA course. And through that, the philosophy is an interesting one, which is basically it is very similar in a lot of ways to NCVPS, which is North Carolina Online Public Schools. And so what it does is it provides a core curriculum baseline for students to access on-grade level rigorous materials to be able to complete a course, most of the time required for high school graduation. With that being said, I think we have had a lot of conversations around the difference between modifying and scaffolding for a student. So for example, you can't necessarily change course design content because that is part of the course. You have to teach the on-grade level rigorous standards as a part of the course. But what you can do is scaffold up to be able to provide certain supports along the way. Things like chunking, read aloud in assignments, supporting with a teacher that might be collaborating at the traditional homeschool. And so what I would say is that if there is a situation in which a student is struggling and they're dual-enrolled, I would strongly recommend that that parent reach out to the school and let them know that they feel like there's additional supports that need to be made from a scaffolding perspective. We actually just had a meeting last week with a school and talked about a few different intervention strategies. But one of the things that I will tell you that I firmly believe is that we need to provide students with online access because every single career field that I have talked to has a component of online learning now, including two-year and four-year universities. In fact, I just spoke with someone recently that's child is a freshman in college and three of their courses are online. And so we're trying to battle this. How do we make sure that we're preparing students, but also how are we meeting their immediate needs? And so I will say that CVA has developed what's called a learner profile. And so we're trying to work really strategically with our schools to say, let's make sure that we have the right-fit student in the virtual courses as we move forward. And I will say, I think this semester, we're still growing and learning through that process.
And I'm just going to add to what Sarah said here. You made me excited because one of the most informative parent sessions that we had were with CVA parents. And it was K-5. And it was the information about the scaffolding that Sarah spoke about and just the extra supports. But it's the perfect partnership with our parent community that maybe I want to be a part of Cabarrus County Schools and have a little aspect of homeschooling as well. And this is a great partnership if the profile, if the support's in place. So definitely speaking to the support, but I think reaching out to the school if your child needs help and if they're struggling, no matter what their grade level is.
Is there a way that we could have like some kind of data on what the students, I mean, maybe not grades, but you know, how they're doing and that kind of thing, just to see what's going on?
So Ashley Short is actually going to give the board a presentation over the next, don't quote me on my dates, it's either the 17th when we come back from spring break or it was the first meeting in May. But we have a presentation planned to address some of the things you talked about in terms of success rates, enrollment rates, numbers, courses, things of that nature. So she's going to come and present to the board over the next, it's either the 17th or the first, I just forget which meeting it is, but she's coming.
Mr. Treadway?
I just want to also, I guess, bring to the table that if it hadn't been for CVA during this pandemic, all of our schools would have been impacted, directly or indirectly. And I think they have had unique challenges that they're recalibrating from as we speak. And I think they're doing a yeoman's job of doing that. So kudos to them and how flexible they've been throughout all this.
Ms. Escobar?
Sorry, their questions made me think of another question. So I agree, Cabarrus Virtual Academy is filling in gaps for us. I mean, let's be real, at the high school level, there are kids going to full-time high schools and they thankfully have English, they have science because these awesome teachers are filling in those gaps. So to just better understand your bullet, so what you're asking for is holding up kindergarten. Because what you're worried about is that these kids aren't getting what they need through virtual. But that's not saying, because what we're doing with program choice is we're phasing it out. But that doesn't mean you're going to phase it out for anything. I mean, elementary school kids could hop on in first grade, second grade, third grade, even if they don't do it at kindergarten, right?
So right now, we are holding new enrollments. We are holding off on any new enrollments and we are not enrolling any kindergarten students so we can do a better programmatic analysis as it relates to virtual learning with our earliest learners. I will tell you, a lot of this stemmed from the data analysis that we had as it related to amplify and benchmark and EOG data for those students. But then also, it has to do with the national research that we are beginning to come in as we have partnered with several national agencies. We are in the Teaching Strategies Lab cohort. And so we've tried really hard to plug ourselves into national networks around online learning because very honestly, there's a big difference between pandemic learning and what good quality online learning is. And we now know that, taking a step back. But what it means for us is that we want to follow the research, we want to follow the data, and we want to make sure that whatever programmatic decisions we make, whether it's with our instructional framework, our philosophy on delivering online content, or what programmatic theming we're offering for CVA best fits the learner profile but also fits the individual needs of the student. What we don't want to do is be able to not guarantee a high-quality curriculum for our earliest learners. And so again, there's a few things that we're still trying to work through and we want to make sure that we have a clear plan on that before we communicate with our parents and stakeholders and open up the lottery process again.
I was just going to add to that. Everything that Sarah said, I feel like I'm just piggybacking on that. But it is so important to look at if the students' needs are being met and hearing from the parents themselves and students in the cases that she speaks of. Because they know when I need something else. But I do believe this format and learning format and management program is here to stay. Students will need skills, a specific skill set to be successful. And I like the idea of us going back and looking at, well, have we provided the supports to make sure that any student in Cabarrus County can access this program and be successful?
The other thing that I do think is really important to note is that the exception would be any student that needed homebound education services. So obviously, that would be an extenuating circumstance where they would not go through program choice. We would handle those on a case-by-case basis. And obviously, we would not be closing that opportunity to our students or families.
I wanted to ask Ms. Sandage, did you have any questions?
So I had my hand up again, I don't know who's monitoring that. But I just had a few questions. So initially, I wanted to ask specifically if kindergarten will be halted across the district for this specified year? And what does that mean for like waiting list or for people or for kids who really and truly need those slots? Like for whatever reason?
Can I ask a point of clarity, Ms. Sandage? Is that for a specific program?
No, I'm talking about this kindergarten, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about, I wanted to clarify that we weren't talking about, we're talking about kindergarten.
Are you asking if they're talking about kindergarten students?
So I'm sorry, I'm not making sense here, but are we talking specifically about kindergarten children that will be, they won't be able to get in specified programs? Do I hear that correctly? And not prepay?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. So we're specifically talking about kindergarten being impacted and not opening enrollment for kindergarten students at CVA.
Okay, thank you very much. That just helped my heart to be the journey. Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, board members.
I'm sorry, I have another question. My other question was around, so I know all of this work was done pre the full-scale realignment. How does this coincide with that? I don't know if I've heard that.
That is a great question. So I have actually been speaking with Dr. Kapiki and I think those two work hand-in-hand. And arguably, I think one of the things that we really want to look at is in the programmatic themings at schools where we do not have available seats right now, meaning that the schools are at capacity. We cannot take any students outside of the neighborhood. We would really want to look at where are there opportunities? If we're funneling resources, position allocations to these schools, is there a way to open it up to other community members where that might not be geographically where they are, you know, zoned for? So I think both of which have to go hand-in-hand as we move forward to be able to provide as much equity, access, and opportunity for students. And ideally, it will give us the long-term visioning to try to figure out if there are additional programs that our community would like to see. For instance, if there is another program that's only offered in one side of the county geographically, is there an opportunity to consider another program if that is what the community desires?
I would say it's great information to go in.
Thank you for, I'm sorry.
I was saying, I think it's great information to go into the realignment process. I mean, it's nice to have it up front.
Thank you. And I was going to add, Ms. Black, thank you so much for all your work on this and we will truly be missed.
I appreciate that, Ms. Sandage. I just wanted to say one thing since my superintendent, who had faith in me a couple of months ago, gave me a shout-out. I want to give you a shout-out in Cabarrus County Schools and even my first administrators position with Dr. Probst. One of my favorite authors is Simon Sinek. And, you know, remembering your why. And he said, "We become leaders the day we grow people and not numbers." A lot of you have paved the way for me and allowed me to be the educator I wanted to be in Cabarrus, and you will be missed. I am grateful and I'm still a part of the Cabarrus County family, so please don't act like you don't know me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ray.
And I would just like to give kudos to Ms. Black because she has been tremendous. And every single principal has said, "I could not do this without Ms. Black's support." She has walked alongside me this whole time. So I know some of these are hard conversations to have with community members, but we really feel like we are doing what's best by children but also opening up opportunities where they might not exist.
Well, we will keep you up here for mid-year academics.
Wonderful. So I'm here this evening just to give a few updates as it relates to middle-of-year academics and some of the supports that we are providing our students and scaffolding along the way. And with me and joining me is Dr. Roth today to specifically talk about MTSS and how we're supporting our subgroup populations. And so the first of which, I know I've shared this before, but one of the things that I think we have a tremendous support or pride in is the ability to be able to scaffold instruction and individualize instruction for students. And so one of the ways that we do that is through our benchmarking assessments. And so we're able to really look and take a deep dive at not only what students or what the state projects in terms of proficiency levels for each individual student, but we're able to gauge that throughout the course of the year. To say, if I've taught these standards, how are students progressing? If they haven't made growth, what is my action plan before I get to the end of the year? Which really, we kind of say, EOG, EOC is autopsy data. There's nothing that a teacher can do on June 12th to remediate or fix a situation in which a student is not proficient. And so very candidly, that is more of an accountability measure than it is a driving instruction. And so the state is currently looking at our accountability system to try to figure out different ways to address that. But right now, we use the benchmarking piece to do that. And so as you can see here, on the first column is the grade level in the subject area. This is specifically for elementary. The NCDPI or EVOS is projecting it proficiency. And then you can see where we are currently landing. One of the things I thought was really great is seeing Benchmark 1, 2, and then 3, where we just concluded because, I mean, I have to give our elementary schools a tremendous shout-out. They are growing kids and that is how we reach our proficiency goals is one by one, getting students to grow and exceed their growth measures. And then this is our middle-of-year academic data. So again, you can see EVOS projections and the growth that our middle schools have made from Benchmark 1, 2, and 3.
Can I ask a question?
Please, yes.
Because I'm just looking at these numbers and some numbers just happen to jump out to me. Eighth grade, we've got some work to do with eighth grade. Can you speak a little bit to what you think and just based on your analysis from all this, is what's going on?
Are you speaking specifically to eighth-grade math?
All of it, all of it.
So I think a couple of things. So the first of which, when you're looking at eighth-grade reading, it's lining up to what we are seeing in sixth and seventh-grade reading. When you're looking at eighth-grade math, this is where it gets tricky, where you begin to see students that are in honors classes, they are not taking eighth-grade math assessment, they are taking the Math 1. So Carl has done a tremendous job, Mr. Sane, in helping us triangulate. If we were to take the number of students in Math 1 and then take the number of students in math, eighth-grade math, and determine their proficiency, they're landing pretty much where the other grade levels are. The other thing that I will tell you is absolutely, we have room to grow. I don't think that I can sleep at night and say, "We've done an excellent job with 50-some percent proficiency." But at the same time, I think it's also important to celebrate the wins in which students are making growth because that's what's going to get to our long-term goal. I will say, when you look at eighth-grade math in terms of where the state is projecting them versus where they came out at the benchmark, interestingly enough, you actually see more growth needed in Math 1, which is typically our group of honor students, than you actually see in eighth-grade math, which is only down 2% based on where they're projected at. So that is what the state gives us as our benchmark. And the analogy they use is you're in a race every year. So the goal is that you're with a cohort of students that you end up making that same amount of growth with.
Sorry, just one more question. I know, I want you to keep going. But can you tell us why the EVOS projection is so much lower?
Great question.
With the regular math?
Yep, so basically, what ends up happening is when students get to eighth grade, they have the option of taking eighth-grade math or Math 1. And so we specifically target students that may be projected at proficiency in for Math 1. That is very intentional. So what ends up happening is that you're going to get a group or cohort of students that may not have tracked at proficiency historically in eighth-grade math. And the way that EVOS calculates that is they take all of the historical data of when they have had an end-of-grade test to determine what the likelihood is that they would pass. So based on that, as you can see, our Math 1 scores for eighth grade are incredibly high compared to the rest of those numbers. Because you're taking out the group of your highest-performing students historically, and you're putting them in a completely separate section than those students in eighth-grade math. Does that answer your question?
No, thank you.
And I will say, you will see the same thing happen in our high school scores. So in high school, you're going to see the Math 1 students that have not taken it in middle school, which would be that cohort of eighth-grade math students.
Ms. Escobar.
Hi. Can we go back to the fifth graders? So fifth-grade reading, or was it math? It goes down and it's not up. Anyway, it's not where it needs to be. And what interventions that you do? So it's not just the teachers that are responsible for this or trying to get these kids on track, right? So once you get this information, we still got?
Then what?
We got another quarter, right? So how can we make sure that those numbers are where they need to be at the end of the year?
Absolutely. You've led me to my next slide. I feel like you just introduced me beautifully. Is there any other questions on these numbers? Yes.
Hi, excuse me, I think we have to be careful, pardon me. I think we have to be careful what we're looking at when we measure. For example, I think Cabarrus has a strong reputation for pushing, promoting students to challenge themselves. And it would be easy if we're not careful to allow that marginal Math 1 student to just not take Math 1. And that's going to make everybody's numbers look better. But I think we have a long tradition of challenging students to take that next level. And so I think that's part of what we're seeing as well.
Any other questions?
Any other questions about that, Ms. Sandage? Okay.
I don't have any questions.
And so then this is our middle-of-year academic data. One of the things that I would say is just a reminder at high school, you have the option to take semester or year-long. So this is the first semester mark. I would say, I don't think any of us feel confident putting our eggs in a basket one way or another, because you don't know when necessarily a student's master schedule allows for them to take an EOC course. So it may be in the first semester, it may be in the second. And again, we wouldn't necessarily even get EVOS growth measures typically until September of this next year. But this is the leading indicators that we have thus far, based on the data that's been collected from the students in January when they took their EOCs.
Any questions about this slide?
Awesome. So now, what do we do with this data? Because that is the most important part of the process. And so we firmly believe that it is not up to the classroom teacher or the building-level coach or leader. When our kids are successful, we're all successful. When our kids are not successful, we all have a part to play and we're all responsible. And so one of the things I'm tremendously proud of is the interdepartmental support that we have as a district to be able to provide comprehensive supports for our schools. The other thing to consider is that we work really hard because there is really only one math specialist for 6th through 12th grade. There's one ELA specialist, and we have one science specialist for kindergarten through 12th grade. So we've been very intentional on how we deploy supports for these schools, and it starts with core. So once we get this data back, as you can see, we take a benchmark data, and then our individual schools, our assistant superintendents do a phenomenal job of leading school-wide data digs. And one of the commitments that we made this year is that we would not look at academic data in isolation. We firmly believe that, we believe that academic data needs to be triangulated with discipline data, academic data. Do the students feel like they have a sense of belonging in the school? Because we know all of those things contribute to students' growing. When students feel safe when they come to school, when they feel like they have good relationships with their teachers, that's when we see the tides rising for everybody, and that's when we see students growing. So schools will have those data digs, and through those data digs, they complete SWOT analysis, which basically allows the students to identify, excuse me, the schools to identify what it is that their teachers and their students need. So it could be a resource to address a specific standard. It could be professional development. It could be, we actually didn't cover that standard in our curriculum units the way we needed to, to align to that benchmark assessment. So we need to go back and hit that again. And so basically, from those data digs, we get our charge from a curriculum and instruction and support team to be able to say, what do we need to do to deploy support for the schools? So could that mean a specialist coming into a grade-level PLC and providing professional development or resources or modeling a lesson? Could that mean that we're going to send out some resource guides to all of our teachers in biology? Because they asked for support in this specific standard. And so we work really intentionally with assistant superintendents in the schools to devise support plans for each of our schools. And in some cases, it's for every school, because it might be a standard that is a struggle across the board. In other cases, there may be specific schools that have more beginning teachers on a grade level. And so we know that they need additional support. And so we work strategically with our assistant superintendents and our leaders to be able to make a support plan that meets their individualized needs, which then in turn meets student needs. One of the things I am most proud of is the level of depth that our leaders take in terms of looking at data. They drill it down all the way to subgroups to be able to say, is there trends or patterns in us not meeting the needs of our students with individualized educational plans? Or are our multilingual learners responding in English too, the way that we would want them to? So all of that data really surfaces in the school data digs, as well as the district support team data digs. And they have different trackers and resources that the assistant superintendents, as well as Mr. Sane and the Accountability Department have developed to be able the best to support them. From there, they implement, we implement for six weeks. So we go through, we develop, these are the needs, now what do we do with them? And then typically, they take a benchmark again. So that's where we would typically see growth along the trajectory. In some cases, you're not going to necessarily see big pops in between each benchmark if different standards are assessed. So sometimes in science, we might not assess the same standard every time. So it wouldn't be uncommon for maybe them to stay stagnant until the end of the year when we see a pop because we're assessing different standards each benchmark. And so that speaks to the multi-tiered systems of support. And so our MTSS coaches, as well as Karen Haller and Julie Daa, have done a tremendous job in really just providing structures and supports to look at this. And so again, I kind of shared, we don't actually look at academic data in isolation because we know the research supports that all three of these things work together in tandem. And arguably, if one of these components is missing, typically you see that the others are also a challenge.
So as you can see here, this is our MTSS framework, and it is a total school improvement framework, as you saw from the previous slide. And the green part here is where most of our students are, but it represents all students getting core curriculum. So you can see there that, you know, we have a core curriculum for academics. All students receive this curriculum. We have behavior supports for all students. You may have heard of PBIS. And then the third is our social-emotional curriculum, which is our positivity project. That is what all students are getting across the district. And then you see the yellow area. So this is where we look at that data, and if we see patterns in any three of these, we put in extra supports. So for example, if you have students who are at the middle-school level, and you are seeing that the reading proficiency is not there, they're not making any gains, you might look at that student in the MTSS, in an MTSS data meeting, and say, "What additional supports can we give this student?" It might be that they will be put in a Skills Plus class, which is a remediation class that's on top of core. So you're layering those interventions on top of their core support. And then it continues, and the same thing would happen with behaviors. We might put in a check-in, check-out, or give someone a mentor. For the social-emotional, that's our wellness survey. And if we see that students are having difficulty making friends, or they're having some problems with anger, we might put them in a group support. Our positivity project has additional supports beyond core, as well as our Panorama Student Wellness Survey also has a toolbox with additional supports that people, that CISP counselors can pull when they're working with a small group. And of course, that very top tier is when you have a student that is still struggling after all of these supports are put in, and this is intense support. And this is where the whole team comes around one child to problem-solve and say, "What can we do?" So everybody's putting their minds together, thinking and saying, "Okay, this child might need some one-on-one support." Or this child is not progressing in reading like they should be. Let's try something different that might be more along the lines of a Hill Rap.
Hill Rap.
Hill Rap is one intervention that we use that is very, very specific for a small group of students, like three to four, or maybe even five, where they're getting more intense. So that is our process, and we monitor this, we keep these records, we check routinely to see if our students are making progress.
Ms. Lindsay?
Are we able to see the data on this analysis that you guys are doing? For, like, if this is actually working, the support that we're giving for these students that either aren't succeeding in the academics, behavior, social-emotional? Because social-emotional is fairly new. I mean, it's one of the things that the state mandated that we do. So, you know, obviously, behavior is going to, if you're not behaving in school, you're not going to care about your academics. Which is why I'm so concerned about the academics piece of it, because I think for so long, we haven't really focused on that. So seeing some of these numbers, it is a little concerning just to see how, I don't know. I guess, from the state standard, what their goal is for us, and then what we're achieving or not achieving, even based on that lower standard that it looks like the state is achieving or putting out there for us. I would really like to see us start focusing a lot more on the academics piece of it and getting more data on where we, like, literally, logistically are academically and how these kids are doing with their grades.
I'm trying to be thoughtful what I say, because you're not, you're right, I agree with you. I'm just trying, I'm processing kind of what you said. I think that what I want to say is this, and I don't have the answer to the whole question that you're asking. I think the direction that you're pointing is accurate. I think sometimes we get caught up in this set of data, and what I'll say about that is this. And I'm not pushing it aside, but this is a long, big, huge conversation because when you look at academic behavior and social-emotional material, and you're trying to assess, you know, what's working, how it's intertwined. We all know that it's intertwined, there's no doubt about it. There's a lot of interrelational situations going on there, right? But I think that there are so many variables that play into, when we talk about assessment. When you look at EOCs and EOGs, they're just, they're one-shot tests. And I don't think, I think that's a valuable piece of information, but I don't think it's the end-all, be-all. I don't think you judge a school on just that particular set of assessments. Not one would argue differently, and I know some of the arguments are going to say, but I think you need to look at the big picture. One way of looking at it is this too, when you look at the state, I would say, the state right now is hitting you 80% performance, 20% growth. Yet we're showing EVOS growth using the state's numbers, and we're exceeding that. So if we were to measure the growth, if you flipped it, it was 80% growth and 20% performance, we'd be off the charts in terms of our success rate. So I guess that's more of a formula-type, formulaic look at it. The state itself, I am completely confident the state, because I know the State Board of Education, I know that Catherine Truitt is working hard on looking at the way we grade schools moving forward. And I think the portrait of graduate is another good way to go because there are seven competencies or seven pillars there that are very important that we need to make sure that we're weaving into our assessment practices. All that to say this, the state's going to change how they grade schools. I'm very confident they're going to do that, because there's a lot of conversation on that. And one of the things that I commend them for is looking at, what are the other things that you're doing that take in the whole way you grade schools? What are the other pieces to the puzzle? I kind of agree with you, and I look at this right off the bat, but my look is a little different. The academic, you have very, very strong academic programs in Cabarrus County. And I've said it since I've been here, you should be very proud of the foundational system you've built here. Kids here have access and opportunities and resources that don't exist in other parts of the country. I'll continue to say, our goal and our bar is to be the best in the nation. That's never going to be lowered. We should constantly be trying to achieve that. But there are challenges. When I look at that, when I look at just those three things, I think, okay, what's the attendance rate of the child? What's the status of the child coming into school? What's the social-emotional health of the kid? What's the background on maybe perhaps the family situation? What's the support system that are placed? How many possible other-tier agencies that we work with, collaborate with in the districts that family or child may be involved with? There are so many variables that go into it. And yet, I'll say, 98% of our kids are going to four-year schools, two-year schools, military or college and careers that they choose to go into. That data is real. And to me, that's another way that we get locked into those scores and we don't look at all the other things. And I'm not downplaying what you say, because Sarah can tell you, and so could the rest of the cabinet, I almost fall out of my chair when I see the 26% numbers. And I continue to ask, well, what's going on in math? And there's a lot to that. Doesn't mean we need to improve. But I can tell you, you have first-rate academics here and fantastic faculty, teachers, administrators, and a community that really has built a great system. But I think that, when I look at that though, I always say, but that doesn't mean you stop and you rest on your laurels, how to get better. We share this data with you to say, here's where we are, now we need to get better, which is why we have a strategic plan, which is why we are looking at the portrait of graduate, which is why I commend the board, because that's social-emotional. One of the things that pops up immediately in my head is that social-emotional data that we're using. And I know we're not all in agreement on some of the questions that are asked in some of the surveys. But the positivity project, I mean, those folks that created that, the West Point graduates that have created that program, and the feedback we're getting from the community and our parents on that program and the success it's having with our kids is tremendous. The survey information that our kids are responding to have identified at-risk kids that we can immediately get resources to. Now, you know, we know we've had three tragic situations in our school system this year. But that data that we've used by using some of those different programs and surveys that the board has supported, you should be proud of yourselves because you've saved lives. You flat-out have, because it has identified kids that have some serious issues that we've been able to immediately say, boom, here's how we're going to address that issue. And, you know, there are a lot, Concord High School comes to mind immediately. I had a conversation recently with Dr. Arbach, and he has put in a tremendous program. It's not to say that all the rest of the principals in the district haven't, because they have. That was just the most recent in my mind, about how he's taking some of that information, identifying his at-risk students, and assigning a teacher to, a teacher or another adult to that particular kid to make sure that there's a contact or touch base. We know that everything's relational, that relationships build good students. And that research is clear that if you have one solid relationship in your life, as you're going through school, your chance of being successful and thriving are tenfold. So I know I'm being a little long-winded. The point I'm trying to make is there are so many different variables that play into this. And it's like, I always say to folks, what is it you're measuring? And what's the outcome you're after? What's the goal? What's the goal? Because I could point to a lot of different directions as to where we're successful. Our SAT scores are above the national average. So do we measure all of our kids on the SAT scores? I would say that's fool's gold too. You don't want to measure it all on that. But yet, it's a good indicator that we're being very successful, so our kids are doing very well. So I hear what you're saying. I'm not negating what you're saying. I just think that you're getting a snapshot tonight like the rest of the world gets, a snapshot based on EOCs and EOGs. And, you know, this tracks all the way back to the No Child Left Behind, the Elementary-Secondary Act, and it's kind of gotten to where we are now. In a lot of ways, that act has narrowed curriculums, not broadened them. And our goal is to broaden them and make sure that we, you've heard me say it repeatedly, access resources, opportunities. We want to make sure that we provide everything we can for our children, so when they walk out of here, they're as prepared as anybody else to be productive. You know, again, I compare Science Health Institute, find me another school that's got a relationship with a healthcare partner like Gator, which is a billion-dollar industry up and down the East Coast that we have a partnership with. Dominique Veloz Hyde, you've heard me say it, she's just created two pathways for our kids to get bachelor's degrees, never have to leave. You can get a nursing degree or biomedical degree, working through those pathways, just in a program that's only really into its second year. Actually, it's in its first year, going into its second year. And yet, we've now created two college bachelor's degree programs. That's success. That's long-term success that's only going to continue to provide opportunities for kids. We're talking about, you know, some of the other things we're talking about in the strategic plan is how do we, to go backwards, how do you get more early childhood kids into the system so that we can reach them immediately when we need them the most, so that they're prepared to be successful when they hit first grade, if we have them for two or three years, to be successful, and maybe get them the mental health supports that they need. You know, we're even having a conversation about birth to kindergarten, and ways we can get kids lined up with resources in the community, so that those families that need the help understand that they have a resource and a partner in Cabarrus County Schools, so that we can be successful. So I just say, I caution everyone, be patient when you look at those scores, when you look at those data sets. They're one piece of the puzzle that we show, and we're proud to show that. And I also want to be careful too, because our teachers work so hard. And then we've talked about the pandemic and all the things that they're coming off of. And I think sometimes we forget, our teacher-student wellness, and I was reminded of this today, our teacher-student wellness matters too. And we have to make sure that we're taking care of the adults as well as the kids, so that we're very well-rounded in addressing all the issues, so that we can get, you know, high-achieving kids. So I just say, I just say to everyone, just be careful as to what is you're measuring. And I will advocate for this school system every single day, 24/7, because it is a phenomenal system. That does not mean that we shouldn't be chasing continuous improvement all the time, because we should. And we need to confront the brutal facts. When we have a weakness or an opportunity for growth, we need to, hey, this is not working. And as Sarah and Dr. Roth have pointed out to you, when you have those data digs, and you have those assessments, and our assistant superintendent sits down with their principals, and they talk to them about that, and they, they're asking the question, why? You're starting to discover some of the problems, and those healthy discussions lead us to better outcomes with kids. So a lot of room for growth, but overall, we always need to understand that we have a really good system that we need to improve upon. And I'll end, but the math number drives me crazy, but I understand a little better now because of some of the issues and how kids take the courses and things of that nature. But I don't mean to be long-winded, but I wanted to, I'm an advocate for the system, and I just want to make sure that we understand what we're gonna ask. But I thank you for the input. And your questions make us better, so I appreciate that.
I was just gonna say, you are a proud Papa, and I'm happy that we hired you, because you fiercely defend. However, that being said, please understand that when I question things, it's not because that I think we're doing a bad job, or because that there's something going on that isn't appropriate. It's because I do want our children to get better. I do want to understand what we can, we can help to improve our children's academic performance. But just so you know, thank you for being the defender of this school system and the teachers that you are, because that is, that is why we love you here. So I'll just say that.
I'm a very, I, you know, it's, you know, the praise is too much when you do well, and probably criticism is as well. But, you know, Dr. Williams, Dr. Bish taught me this by a book study that they were doing. I kind of stole the book and read it. And one of the things I took out of it, the quote I took out of it, I'll never forget, you know, "One of us is not as smart as all of us." And it takes all of us to do it. And I am a very small, small cog in the system. I have, as you see, you see these folks speak to you on monthly basis and come up and talk to you. That's the excellence that exists here. My job is to make sure I'm developing that talent as best I can, hopefully, and getting the best people in front of you that help our kids. And I think that I can say confidently, as you see what I see every day, we have phenomenal leaders in our system. And then I'll end by saying, I don't ever take your questions wrong, because I know that your heart is vested in the system, as is all of our board members, so I appreciate that. And I would encourage our board, ask the challenging questions, ask the questions and make us sit back and think, hmm, how can we do that better? And if you have a better insight or a better way, share that with us. Because if we're working as a team and working together, then we're all gonna be better in the long run. So I never take the questions the wrong way. And even when we disagree, it's healthy, good debate and discussion. You don't get better by sitting back and being quiet. So push us, challenge us, and hold us accountable. We're okay with that, so I thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yes, I'll add my two cents in here. We are, one thing that we are missing, and granted, it's a state-mandated thing, but it's a school improvement plan that all the schools do every year. They have a group of parents that gets involved, the staff gets involved, the teachers, principals, the leadership, and it's a bottom-up process, and it focuses on academics, and it focuses on data, and it focuses on specific schools. And we get that data every year. We just don't spend a whole lot of time going through it like we're talking about now. And I think that's probably one that we should spend a little more time on those processes, because it's got the data, and it's got exactly what each school has, is having some struggles with and needs help with. And the fact that it's a bottom-up process, I think, is a big thing, and it's not a top-down program. It's exactly what they needed, those particular schools to improve performance, academic performance.
So I feel like you just walked into a web. So I thank you for setting that up. You teed this one perfect for me. One of the things we're working on, you are 100% correct on the school improvement process. So when we came in, we evaluated that process and looked at that process, and we felt that that process could be a lot better, and we needed to focus more on those indicators and those protocols and the data sets that are in the school improvement plan, and use it to drive improvement, right? It was one of the reasons, and was one of the reasons why that we hired Dr. Bowers. That's why you'll see in his title, he's the Chief of Student Performance and Auxiliary Services, because the student performance piece that he has been charged with and is working through is the school improvement plans. He has, with the rest of the cabinet, developed a plan with the principals that we're going to talk about and unleash. And Dr. Bowers, if I have my dates mixed up on this, correct me, but during our leadership, our summer leadership time in June, June 20, the week of June 21st, we're gonna talk about the school improvement process, and we're gonna focus on three or four sets of information, so our folks can be very focused on improving the process. And Dr. Bowers, anything you'd like to speak to on that, that had missed? It's a great, I just want to point this out, it's a great point on your part, this is what we're focusing on, and it's one of the things that Dr. Bowers has led and done a really good job with.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the opportunity. And thank you, Mr. Walter, for the question. Totally unplanned. But, you know, we are in the planning stages of that, because I think you mentioned something important there. We talked about the, Dr. Piggy referenced the portrait of a graduate earlier. We talked about our State Board of Education objectives as well, and strategic priorities. We talked about our strategic plan, and where do these elements come together and really drive our school improvement planning process? So it's really our effort to really create that alignment and provide some resources that really, as we begin these conversations in the future, you will see those school goals, those district goals identified, so that we can create that continuous alignment, and we can really be in tension with our supports at the school level.
I'd love that we spend a little more time on that when that happens.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. But the process is happening, and we are certainly in the planning stages of that. So thank you for giving us a bit of a preview. This is the movie trailer for that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Any other questions, Ms. Sandage? Did you have any questions?
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. We did want to add one more thing for you guys. We have a multilingual program that supports the needs of our students who are learning English, and that is one of our subgroups that we support. In our district support team that you saw on the previous slide, when we work with that, we have our specialists from that department. We have two, it's a department of three. With the multilingual coordinator, we have an instructional specialist, and then we have a data manager support for enrollment. And, so I think the question came up, is how are we supporting the academic success of our multilingual learners? Well, with the multilingual learners, we have three service models. And I want to give you some background information first, with the number of students that we have in the program across the district. Right now, we have 3,320 students that are receiving direct services. With that, we have 40 positions allocated too. So we have to be very strategic in how we are meeting the needs of our students. Just for your information, we have 60 languages, and the top five languages are Spanish, Telugu, Tamil, Hindi, and Arabic. So we have some different languages that you may not have even heard of before. So in order to meet the needs of our students, there's three models. One is a pull-out services for students with the highest needs. These are our newcomers. Our newcomers who come in, we typically, we do not pull them out of core instruction. It's another time during the day that they are pulled out of their classroom, and they go with the ESL teacher to a specific location and receive direct services. The second model is for kids who are kind of in between, they've been here for a while. They may push in and do small group instruction strategically with the group of students in a classroom. And then the third one is when we're able to do this, and we do this more at the secondary level, at middle and high, is where they're co-teaching. And we strategically schedule students to be, for example, we cluster-group them in biology, and then the ESL teacher may co-teach biology with them, and they're working on helping them to understand the vocabulary and the concepts. We also integrate content and language standards. So our language standards for ESL are very specific for reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We have target professional development for ML and classroom teachers. Last year at our Leadership Academy, one entire day was devoted for PD, for administrators and leads on ML instruction. And we focused on the language-rich classroom and giving them strategies for that. We also provide, at RISE, many of our ML, our ML teachers did sessions for classroom teachers on how they can further meet the needs of our ML students. So we had quite a few, and you may have been able to hear about that tweet, it's on Twitter. We also have a new teacher cohort this year. We have a new instructional specialist, and she has been meeting with the BTs, the first year ESL teachers. And in addition, we use funding to purchase research-based resources for our ML teachers, including Lexia English. We have some library materials, things that are brought into their classrooms for them to read. And of course, the core support plan that's implemented through the MTSS framework, and that's done through the data process, looking at schools that may need more support than other schools in deploying professional development or specific strategies out to them. So when you think about a multilingual learner, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. First of all, it takes five to seven years for a multilingual learner to become proficient in academic English. So think about that. That's a long time, right? And sometimes we think, if they're here a year or two, they're just gonna learn English just like that. And that does not always happen, because everything that they're hearing, they're having to translate back into their language, then translate back to English to respond. And that is a process. So it takes a long time for them to come fluent. Newcomers, students who are in their first three years in US schools with limited English proficiency, need time to learn the new language and appropriate language supports. They've got to learn strategies. They've got to learn how to use that English dictionary and things like that, to help them understand the content. And the knowledge of, this is really important too, knowledge of English languages is a factor to be considered when discussing retention. Occasionally, we have requests to retain an ESL student, but we have to be very careful about doing that, because there's so much into retention. And if you've ever heard of the LIGHTS Retention Scale, that is a specific survey that we fill out that tells us if this is a good student for retention. And typically, ESL students are not good candidates for retention, only because they are still learning the language. And we can't really say, just because you're not learning the language, doesn't mean that you don't have the intellectual capacity to learn the content. A lot to think about.
Board members, Mr. Walter?
So before you jump in on that, just real quick, I wanted to just, because I forgot my comments, and I'll sit back and you can ask all the questions you want. But to piggyback on this, one of our goals and strategic plans is to reach out more to our community and be in line with their community. So over the last nine weeks, 50 Spanish-speaking Cabarrus County parents have attended English classes at Winkler Middle School. These classes take place on Mondays and Wednesdays from 4:30 to 6:30. Four of our Cabarrus County multilingual and dual-language immersion teachers are leading these classes, two beginner, one intermediate, and one advanced. And two teachers are leading the childcare. So these, the multilingual department have provided textbooks and workbooks for the parents at no cost, and the use of technology during the class sessions to practice their listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills. In addition, we have offered free childcare for the parents and students in grades K to five. The children are given a snack and homework while their parents are learning English. This program has been very successful, and we are happy to announce that this Wednesday, our 50 parents will graduate from the program. So it's another way where we're lining up the community to help us and help our multilingual, as you see here, we have over 60 languages, so we're reaching out to our community and saying, hey, let us help you too, and here's some resources we can offer. So I just wanted to point that out to you. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up something. Those first two bullet points that you used there, or the two bullet points that were used when the language immersion kind of was sold or presented to us by Dr. Van Hooch way back when, about the dual-language immersion and having those Hispanic kids take advantage of that, not just the English children that want to learn the language, but the actual folks that were brand-new to this country, that they could actually speak their native language the whole day, for a couple days or something. And that was supposed to improve the performance. Are we still doing that, or are we not?
We are, absolutely, yes. We are, and we're actually even putting them into the program if they come in in third grade. We're allowing them to join a dual-immersion class.
Ms. Lindsay?
So I just had a question about the first bullet point. It's from 1981. So I'm just curious, with all of the, like, technology and stuff that we have now, is that still accurate data that it's taking five to seven years? Because I think that anybody that would look at that and go, that's from 1981, there's so much that has improved since 1981, and I guess, access to information. So just to confirm that that is still accurate data.
And proficient academic English means that you are proficient in reading and writing it. So I think that's the piece. Typically, students can talk, and they will have the conversational English, but it's that next step that takes longer.
Makes sense. I just wanted to point that out, because I'm sure I'm not the only one that noticed that that was, I mean, almost the year I was born, so that was like 45 years ago.
Ms. Escobar?
So the five top languages, I've not, I've not heard of them before, besides Spanish, obviously. So do we have staff members that speak those? I know we have them speak, they speak Spanish. And I also know, and it should be clear, that you do not have to speak the child's native tongue to teach them English. That is not the standard, so I know that. But do we have people who do?
Not typically.
Not typically. And so anytime we're using the need for, obviously, parent communication, for translator services, we do actually have, we have translators on staff with us, but then we also use a contracted agency for languages that we may not have someone in the region that is proficient in translating. And so I will tell you, with thousands of languages, that service is invaluable to us in terms of translating documents, communicating with parents, communicating with students, helping with enrollment. And so we work specifically with that agency to match the schools up with the appropriate translator resources they need.
And so I get my Connect Ed messages, they come in English and in Spanish, but what happens with that general information? How do we make, so I'm getting that the teacher stuff is all gonna get, and that core class is gonna get translated, but for all that other stuff, you know, that there's an event this week, there's that, you know, your school money is for this trip or whatever, how do they get all that?
You want to speak to that, Drew Block?
You want to speak to that, Phil?
You want to speak to that, Phil?
For those watching, Phil Farr, is our communications person?
I think part of the answer, too, to that question is, you know, there's no, I mean, 60 languages, it makes it, I don't want to say impossible, very challenging, right? So, we lean heavily on our principals and our teachers to make sure that they're communicating with those particular different populations of different languages as we communicate things out. And I would say that that's probably our most effective way in terms of communicating with those parents that are speaking a different language other than, you know, your English or your Spanish, which is the most popular one. So, I know Dr. Roth mentioned in excess of 60 languages. So, our number-one connection would be the teachers and the principals, making sure that they have the resources that they need and understand the different events that are coming up and the different types of opportunities for their kids in the school.
And our Blackboard Connect messages are in English and Spanish. We're working on some things down the road that'll allow us to translate into more languages. So, we do have this on the radar, but currently, yes, it's English and Spanish translations.
And then, just a little plug for tomorrow night, that Hispanic Resource Fair, yes, it's for anybody. You don't have to be Hispanic, you don't have to speak Spanish, you could benefit from going to that fair if you live in our community.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Treadaway?
Dr. Roth, I think, I think we would probably benefit from seeing a LIGHTS Retention Scale. If you've never seen that, I think it's a revealing document. I think that would be good for us to maybe see.
We can certainly share a copy of that, so you can see what is all considered when a candidate or a student is being considered for retention.
Ms. Sandage, did you have any questions?
No, Board Member Escobar is still on fire. I was going to put a plug in about the resource night tomorrow.
Thank you.
The only thing, I'd just like to conclude with saying, I know that we have opportunities for growth, and I will tell you that our processes in place, we are constantly reflecting on that every single day. What can we do to improve our practice? What can we do to better serve our students? But one of the things, I am tremendously proud to work in an organization with such talented, phenomenal, and committed educators and leaders. Last week, we, just last week, we had four different school systems from across the state come to visit our schools for different things. Play-based kindergarten, implementation of letters curriculum, how to close the subgroup gaps. And so, that is pretty much, I would say, on a weekly basis, we are getting calls from NCDPI told us that we need to reach out to you for X. And so, it's just very, very, it's very enlightening, but also, I think it's a huge testament to our leaders, and hopefully, for them, our teachers are able to showcase their amazing work, and they're able to see that not only you succeeding in the four walls of your classroom, but people are noticing. People are noticing in the community, they're noticing in the school system, and arguably, they're noticing across the state, because we have people from all over the state visiting our amazing leaders and educators, and that's a testament to their commitment and willingness to constantly be reflective as well.
So, I do want to say, last week at the Positivity Project Showcase, we had people from all different counties, surrounding counties, come to see the work. And we also had consultants, I guess what their titles are, from DPI. And after Karen Holler and I presented how we came up with the Positivity Project, all the things that took place to select it as our core curriculum, they came up to us and said, you've got to come and share this across the state. So, that's kudos to you guys for supporting us in having a core curriculum, because it's not everywhere, everybody else is like a step behind us.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Okay, Board, we'll move to 7.01 and the presentation by Cooperative Strategies and the Boundary Realignment Process. Welcome, Mr. Louder.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board Members. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce a man that you have heard from above a couple of occasions. You finally get to meet him in person. Mr. Justin Rich here's with Cooperative Strategies, and he was just to lay out the process going forward as we begin this very, very important project of realignment. With that?
Thank you, Tim. Nice to be with you all, and yes, nice to be here in person. I know that over the coming months, you'll be seeing me a lot more, so nice way to kick this off. Tonight, just want to provide a little bit of an overview of the process, outline how these different tasks that we're going to be doing, sort of how those play out, and how we merge those together into a cohesive plan. So, should I turn off one of these? You'll let me know if it starts feedback here. So, just wanted to point to our experience. I think this is relevant, just to highlight all the different things that we have done in the past, and what our goal is, is going into this, we're not looking at drawing maps where we're just moving kids around. We really want to take a holistic approach, and so, our experience in those other areas, hopefully, along the way we can speak to that, we can take our knowledge of demographics and our facility planning expertise, and then also apply that to, as we're drawing maps, using the tools that we have. We have experience in a lot of different aspects of planning, but we'll also be leveraging district staff who know your facilities better, know this community better, and understanding some, I got the nudge when I was sitting there, talking with staff about programs and where those need to be, and making sure that we're not short-sighted in the way that we're approaching this. So, that's why I'm just sharing that again. And our project's really broken up into different components. We have a timeline at the end where we'll walk through with you just how those will all play out and how long we expect those different components to take. On this slide, we've included some information just about who's involved in each one of these, and also the purpose of each one of those. So, starting with enrollment projections, that's a task or component that we'll be taking on, also working with Francis and other planning staff here at the district to make sure that we have a good, solid understanding of your enrollment trends. And really, the purpose of that is just to make sure that when we're looking out 10 years, that we have a good understanding of where student enrollment is going, not only district-wide, but at the school level as well. And also, some community demographic information, too, which may be helpful as we look at that. The one right below that, I've called that a housing study. You'll also hear the term "student potential," maybe more technical name for that document. And again, who's involved in that? It's our firm Cooperative Strategies and also district staff, really focused in on where future development's going to be happening, how that will change the demand for facilities. And we want to be mindful of that as we're, you know, proposing boundary scenarios. So, this is going to be helpful, and this, those combined, along with some of the district information that we'll be getting about facility condition, what buildings will actually look like, what the capacity of those buildings are. That's really the underlying data, or the foundational data that we'll be looking at. So, when we look at the Facilities Master Plan, review and update, I think that is where we start to take a holistic look at what do you need in your facilities to be able to educate? Well, there was three points that were brought up. Dr. Kapicki, if I heard that. Access, resource, and opportunities. I think that's really where we focus in on the master plan, making sure that the facilities will support that. That will involve a broader section of staff. Again, we want to make sure that we have a good understanding of what your facilities need to do, where those programs need to be located, and that we're making, you know, we're making recommendations that are grounded in that. Finally, we get to the boundary study, and this really, I think, involves a lot more stakeholders. And we'll talk about community engagement, that's something that has been brought up here at the Board in the two times that I've joined in, and I know that's really important in each community. But using the data that's analyzed and all of those other pieces leading up to that to develop boundary options. And then, when we have those boundary options, we want to make sure that those are vetted well, and that, you know, we're thinking through all the potential issues, and then present those to the community for their input and for their feedback. So, that's how the process will unfold, just in terms of each sort of phase or component as I've described it. And then, I want to talk a little bit about the decision-making framework and how I view this. And I think importantly, we want to do our homework, and we want to make sure that we're, again, well-informed in how we're approaching this. Our experience tells us that a thoughtful process helps support your decision-making, and that's what we want to do. This triangle graphic here, what I want to do is just sort of show how these each build on each other. And when we get the data, and we have a good understanding of how things are currently and how they might be in the future, then we can start to talk about what are the policy considerations? How are we going to analyze or form a baseline? And I have a slide that will discuss this in more detail. But how are we going to evaluate whether or not one scenario is better than another? Why do we decide to make one change versus another if we don't really have, you know, the understanding of what we're trying to accomplish and what should be prioritized? So, that's where policy considerations come into effect. And then, finally, community engagement, again, for many different reasons, but to just make sure that we're getting it right, and that we've thought through potential issues, and I think that's where it can be really helpful as you go to make your decision. So, community engagement, I want to just point out that there's multiple aspects to this, and I think traditionally, when we go into a process like this, people think, well, where can we go and get information, and who's going to show up there and talk to our folks? And certainly, that is a really important part of that. That really falls under, I think, the direct communication and making sure that, you know, we have those meetings where people can come and learn more, and we can help provide information and dispel myths, if those exist, and all those sorts of things that may come up. But it also involves indirect communication, whether that's, I'm going to be with you all several times over the, you know, next few months and providing good information so that they understand, and then adapting our approach as necessary to make sure that people understand what's going on. So, that's part of it. And then, updates on a project website or on the district's website, just so that they can go and understand where we're at in all of this. And it's a good, that project website will also be a really good source of information for folks that want to know more, or why something is being evaluated or looked at, and how the decision was arrived at. And then, finally, the community input opportunities. Not only will we be meeting in-person with folks, and we have six meetings in the early part of November that we are targeting to have those meetings across the district, but then also throughout, we anticipate having a couple of community input surveys where folks early on in the process can talk about their values and what their priorities are and how they view this. And then later on, when we're actually talking about tangible proposals, now they can start weighing in on that and why they like one versus the other, and what are some of the things that we should have thought about, or, you know, perhaps what are things that we can communicate about why, you know, a certain scenario was chosen over another. So, we will have those opportunities as well. Just to talk a little bit more about boundary criteria, and just a quick preview, and they'll talk about this in the timeline, we do plan to come back to you next month and talk more about this and get into this a little bit more, so that we can really start to hone in on where the priority should be, and talk about some of the potential criteria that come into conflict. You know, we hear about the desire for neighborhood schools, but at the same time, you know, there's other things that might compete with that. So, those are important issues to start talking about, to start, you know, looking ahead to some of the different decisions that will need to be made. But first, let me just talk a little bit about why boundaries are necessary. I'm sure for you all who have been, have, you know, been working with the school district, have been on the board of the school district for awhile now, it makes sense to you why we would have boundaries, but this is a necessary tool, just so that we're managing the enrollment versus the capacity, the utilization of a given building, so we don't have overcrowding. I heard a lot of talk about programs and what's available. This is a way to be able to help, to help direct resources where they're needed. It's a way to equitably have programs and for folks that want to go after a particular program. So, that's why these are important, although it tends to cause a stir when you start talking about boundaries, and we're well aware of that. So, I mentioned there's certain criteria that can be in conflict, and so, it will be important for us to talk a little bit about what the priorities are and the ways that we're going to measure those criteria. Again, we want a baseline so that we can evaluate one scenario over another. We want to be able to have an objective way of doing that, and we want it to be backed by data. I've heard those terms tonight as well. And we think that's the best way to be able to do this. So, we have to choose criteria that we can actually measure, and that's an important piece of this, too. Okay, so, hopefully, this isn't too confusing in the graphics here. We've laid out the various parts that we, parts of the process and the expected timeline, how this will play out over the coming months. There's some boxes down at the bottom, just to provide a little bit more information about the preliminary agenda for each of those meetings. But the highlights, what I'll point out is, again, we have Board of Education updates one this month, one next month, and then every other month thereafter. What we're wanting to do is to present, again, next, for next month's meeting, really dive into the criteria, knowing that we're going to start analyzing a lot of that data come July. So, I think we would want a more full discussion and some direction from the Board on what really should we be looking at? Are there other things that we've left out that we should now start to look at and start to plan for that? The enrollment projections and the student potential analysis, the housing study are getting underway right now. We've got a lot of good data that the district has, and we're using that. So, that'll take several months to be able to go through that whole process, but we look to have preliminary updates for you in that July Board Meeting. And then shortly thereafter, we'll start to kick off the Facilities Master Plan and bring all of that together, so that we really set the foundation for the boundary process. There will be internal redistricting committee, excuse me, meetings, working with the district leadership team, and those will sort of trade-off between having an internal redistricting committee meeting and then holding focus groups, where we'll talk with folks from the community stakeholders about preliminary findings, some information that has come out of those internal redistricting committee meetings. And that will happen really from August through the end of the year. And then, like I said, community meetings will happen in November, the early part of November, probably spread out over two weeks, and we'll have those in various parts of the district. I'll stop there for questions. Thank you again for having me here.
Board Members, Mr. Treadaway?
Not asking for a commitment, but about when do you anticipate the website being up?
Great question. And we're, we're talking about that. I think that you can expect to have that soon. We can start putting information and populating information there. Again, I think people will, as they hear about this process, they want to find out more, and we want to make that easy for them.
So, if I can piggyback on that, Mr. Treadaway, that'll be up and running within the next month. Our intention is to, as we've said to the Board, we're in the process of changing over the website, which will take effect July 1. But in the meantime, what we're going to do is, when you click on Board of Education, we're going to put a link there that says "Realignment Study." You'll click on the link, that link will take you to the CCS Engage page, and all the data will be stored there for our community to go there and see it. So, Phil and I are meeting tomorrow to kind of get it up and running. It's quite possible that we get that up and running this week, so people can check that. But that's where that will be, and we'll make sure it's highly communicated.
Could I just add a please? When you do put that on the website under Board of Education, can you put that on the homepage, too, so that people will know where to go?
We will. We will make sure that people are very aware of where it says. Mr. Farr?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and knock this out tonight. So, we'll put it under the Community Drop-Down on the homepage as well. So, it'll be under the Board of Education on the left-hand tab, when you click there, and it'll be under the Community Drop-Down on the main page.
Ms. Escobar?
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for being here. It's nice to see you. So, for, I just want to clarify for the community, because, I mean, I'm sure my fellow Board Members are finding this as well. I'm on the soccer sidelines, I'm, I go to a parent thing, people are, people are talking about this already. So, to just clarify, it's going to take some time, it's going to be well-thought-out, it's going to be based on data, but if people want to know what's going on, they can watch us and see where we are. So, by the time we need to start talking to them, where it's going to get, it'll be next fall, or this fall, it's coming up.
That's correct. Well said.
Okay. I just want to clarify, so that people who are worried- I just want to clarify, so that people who are worried can pay, can join in, and we're going to give them all the information they need.
Yeah, again, I'll just reiterate that there's not much to report yet. We want to be really thoughtful about this. We want to make sure that we're gathering all the relevant data. What we don't want is to have a half-baked idea or proposal and then have to go back and do a lot of work. So, that's why we're doing it now.
Mr. Walter.
We want you to take your time. We want you to make it thorough and look at different options. But on this chart here, it looks like you'll have something that the community can see, like you said, in the fall, but October, November, it looks like that, according to that, you'll have some scenarios that can be evaluated and then their final recommendation to us in January, so we'd probably vote on that in February, I would guess, is the initial timeline for that. So, they knew that. Are we looking, so you'll take serious consideration, like we talked about programs, and we're talking about a program that we're looking at changing a, you know, a school, a K-12 school. So, that would have a big impact on a boundary, or could have a big impact on a boundary. So, those things, you know, that's not going to be implemented probably by the time your study's done, but it is something of a goal, I guess. Is that going to happen at the same time, or is that, you think that's going to happen at a different time?
I think that, so also, what I would say is that the cooperative strategy will have to consider that into the equation, keeping in mind that we're operating on the early college model, it's about 240 kids over four years implementing a class, as we've done that with some of the other colleges. That being said, yes, cooperative strategies, we'll have to look at that and understand that we're going to try and make that school, a K-12 school. That will not open 24, 25. Optimistically, Brian and Tim in the room, we would hope 25, 26, because it'll take time for the county, hopefully the county approves it in the next month, gives us the funds for it. We build it over the next 18 months, and then 25, 26, school year it opens up.
That's all I had top of my head.
Yeah, just that, that's routine for us to be able to look out into the future and look at potential changes or suggest those kinds of changes. And I think that's natural in a growing community like this. We can also expect that there will be an evaluation of what additional schools are needed in other areas where there has been a lot of growth. So, I think a combination of all those sorts of things we'll be looking at, not just physical capacity, but also, you know, making sure when there are programs that are needed and there's a logical spot for that. And that's why I think this will include a large section of who's in this room here providing input on those master plan findings and that, excuse me, the update to the master plan. I think that'll be part of it, for sure.
Okay, Ms. Sandage, did you have questions?
Sure. Once this is on the website and people are able to access it through, engage with CCS, were they, were they have the ability for some back-and-forth communication? Like, how is that filtered through all of this if folks have questions? Do those go to some specific place and then they ultimately become a part of a frequently asked questions, dialogue? I just wanted to understand that a little bit.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have, spend a lot of time talking with district leadership about the right way to approach that. Certainly, that's something that has been done and I think is helpful. I mentioned surveys, having survey forms that are more general in nature, where people can leave comments, I think are really important. You know, having a, you know, asking questions that either we can respond to or district staff can respond to makes a lot of sense.
Okay, that would be. Is there a timeline, and you don't know what that specifically looks like? Maybe I missed that somewhere.
Yeah, I would say that, given that the website will be rolling out in the next month, that we'll have a better idea of that over the next month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think that's all the questions.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Thank you so much. Okay, board members, we're going to move down to the consent or action agenda for April 17 business meeting, and we'll start with 8.01, and we'll have Mr. Brian Cohn to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As a part of the R. Brown McCauser School Project, if you don't know, the land was actually titled to the graded school board of Concord. As a successor, this board is now the title holder of that land. As a part of the debt service that the county takes on, the land has to be titled in Cabarrus County's name. So, tonight, I'm just asking for your approval for the transfer of that title from the Cabarrus County Board of Education over to Cabarrus County. And that's all.
Is there any discussion, board members?
No cost to that.
No cost to that.
Any other questions? Okay, are we in agreement to put this on the consent agenda for the April 17 business session? Okay, thank you. We will move to 8.02, and we'll talk about the 2023, 2024 board calendar. So, I know there was a couple of questions that I think we answered earlier, but is there any other questions about the calendar? Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I actually took the dates and put it up, plotted it on the calendar, and I have a little bit of a concern for next spring, if we go and look into the, because we've got to do, we have a new school calendar, so things change. Right now, all of our spring breaks are right around Easter. Well, we don't have a spring break around Easter next year. And we have scheduled five meetings in a row, so five straight weeks the board would be meeting, including that day after Easter. I would like to see that a day after Easter meeting postponed a week, same as the following one. So, instead of the first and the eighth of the month, it would be the eighth and the fifteenth. That would give us a little bit of a break. And people do travel on Easter, so, you know, they don't have to rush back to get to our meeting. I think would be beneficial.
Board members, do you agree with the changes that he'd like to make to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we can ask for those changes to be made, and can we go ahead and put that on the consent agenda? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, we will go to 8.03, the resolution in opposition to House Bill 219 charter school omnibus. So, I am going to actually read, so I can get this to come up here, read the resolution. And just so the public knows, the insert, there, our school name will be on there whenever we get this back out to the public. So, we had a discussion about this. Our attorney talked about it, and we just want to read the resolution. Whereas, North Carolina operates two primary systems of public education, charter schools and public schools operated by local school boards, whereas charter schools are not legally required to pay any funds to local school districts regardless of the source of revenue, including federal funds, grants, and gifts. Whereas, over the last 20 years, the courts of North Carolina and the General Assembly have confronted the issue of fair funding for students attending charter schools and local school districts in a manner that has created equal K through 12 funding and put an end to contentious litigation caused by the original charter funding model. Whereas, local funding given to local school districts and placed in the district's local current expense fund designated by the state as Fund II is shared with charter schools on an equal-per-pupil basis, including county appropriations, funds, and fortitors, and special school tax dollars flowing to a charter school located in the taxing district. Whereas, the current law recognizes that local school districts receive certain funds that should not be apportioned or shared with charter schools because, number one, the charter school does not provide the program or service for which the funds are received; two, the funds are simply a reimbursement to the local school district for unrestricted monies already spent, including revenues previously shared with the charter schools; and/or, number three, the monies are legally restricted and cannot be shared. Whereas, North Carolina General Statute 115C-42AC contains the list of funds not shared with charter schools as follows: reimbursements, indirect costs, tuition fees for actual costs, sales tax revenues distributed using the ad valorem method pursuant to General Statute 105-472B2, sales tax refunds, gifts and grants restricted to the use, trust funds, federal appropriations made directly to local school administrative units under GS 168-700, and fund received for pre-kindergarten programs. In addition, the appropriation or use of fund balance or interest income by a local school administrative unit shall not be constituted as a local current expense appropriation. Whereas, House Bill 219, Part VII deletes the list of protected funds, with the exception of trust funds, general grants restricted as to use, and special programs. Whereas, by deleting the list of protected funds, House Bill 219 creates unequal, rather than equal, local funding for K through 12 education, including but not limited to the following revenues. The first one is fund balance. Charter schools do not have to share their savings account, i.e., fund balance, with local school districts. This is money saved by local school districts from prior years during the eligible revenues where already shared, they have been already shared with charter schools. Sharing and with such funds a second time would be double-dipping and a windfall to charter schools at the expense of local school district students. Number two is federal reimbursements. Charter schools do not have to share any federal reimbursements with local school districts. By law, many federal programs require schools to spend unrestricted revenues on specific purposes before getting reimbursed that money by the federal government. Thus, no new money is received, and any unrestricted revenues used by the federal program derived from funds that have already been shared with charter schools, sharing such funds a second time would be double-dipping and, again, a windfall to charter schools at the expense of local school district students. Three, pre-K classroom funds. Charter schools can apply for these funds directly, and they do not have to share them with a local school district. By law, North Carolina pre-K dollars and Smart Start dollars cannot be given to charter schools directly by a local school district. Thus, if HB 219 passes, school districts would be forced to use even more unrestricted local dollars to pay charter schools a appropriation share of these funds, resulting in charter school students getting a higher amount of K-12 dollars, simply because the local school district chose to assist the community by operating one or more pre-K classrooms. Sharing such funds a second time would be double-dipping and a windfall to charter schools at the expense of the local school district students. Number four, tuition and fees for actual costs. If a charter school chooses to allow public use of its facilities, operate a summer program, before-school program, or after-school program, it can charge fees that are not shared with the local school district. Local school districts charge such fees to cover the additional cost of facility use and extra programming because these activities are beyond the normal operating cost for K-12 education. Sharing such funds would be a windfall to charter schools at the expense of local school district students. And, five, sales tax refunds. Charter schools are reimbursed 100% of state and local tax, sales tax amounts they pay, and do not have to share these funds with local school districts. Local school districts only receive a reimbursement of local sales tax amounts paid by the school district. This is another reimbursement. Sharing such funds a second time would be double-dipping and a windfall to charter schools at the expense of local school district students. Whereas, if HB 219 passes, the total financial impact to the Cabarrus County school system and lost K-12 operating funds based on former year 2022, 23 will be substantial. Whereas, if House Bill 219 passes, the total financial impact to all local school districts could expand significantly over time and lead to egregious results based on future increases in charter school enrollments of both in-person and virtual school students. And, whereas, House Bill 219 contains other provisions that will cause uncertainty and encourage future litigation in a currently well-settled area of the law, such as the current law prohibiting supplemental school tax dollars from leaving the tax district approved by voters. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education opposes House Bill 219 and favors the current law that fairly and equally apportions local funding, be it furthermore resolved that the chair and superintendent are authorized to disseminate this resolution to members of the North Carolina General Assembly and the governor, and the board encourages parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to oppose House Bill 219, adopted by the Cabarrus County Board of Education on this day, April 3 of 2023. So, this is the resolution, and I'll open up the floor if any board members have any comments about this.
Who has editing authority to that? Because if we need to approve it today, obviously you've got to be able to sign it, so that somebody's got to be able to edit it.
We can get that done. Any other questions, board members? Okay.
I'd just like to reiterate, I think it's important that we vote on this tonight.
Okay, so, I need a motion to approve the resolution to oppose House Bill 219 charter school omnibus 2023. Ms. Lindsay.
I'll make the motion for that. I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Tredaway.
Do we have to amend the agenda first, Jay?
No, Mr. Walter, you do not, because it's already on the agenda. The question, what's headed, is consent or action, so the court, the board can take action on this.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we will go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution to oppose the House Bill 219 charter school omnibus, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you, board members. We will move now to 8.04, the budget amendment number 006, with the summary of change and fund, and have Ms. Carol Herndon back to the podium. Welcome back.
Hello again, board. I'm happy to bring to you budget amendment number six for 2022, 2023. This is actually a very quiet budget amendment, which is normal for this time of the year as we're actually headed towards year end and have received most of our funding for the school year. You will note that we are currently managing a budget of just over $480 million, and the changes that are summarized in budget amendment six are just under $100,000. And you may see some changes within a couple of funds that net to zero. Those are just budget transfers that we make throughout the year where we thought we would spend money on supplies but ended up spending money on PD. And we make those types of decisions on a daily basis within our district, so I just wanted to explain that. With regard to the two funds, and if we can go to the Word document, the two funds that had net changes in budget amendment number six, our state fund, a change of right at $98,000. We did have some new allotments that came to our district over the past month. One related to driver's ed, another EC, and the final one, our state continues to be very gracious and recognize the rising fuel cost, and we had a chance to apply for a special fuel reserve grant, and we received it during the March timeframe. We actually are going to have an opportunity to apply for another one at the end of this month. So, real pleased that our state recognizes that we're still battling increasing fuel costs in our transportation operation. And then, finally, we did have a very small change in our federal fund budget, and that was related to truing up our actual budgets to our projected budgets throughout the year and making some transfers between different purpose codes. So, again, not a lot of activity, but bring this to you for consideration and approval.
Any questions, board members? Are we in agreement to put this on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon.
Right, I think I'm up next.
We'll go to 8.05, the audit service RFP results and the contract selection.
Right. So, just to remind the board, we had this conversation, gosh, it seems like so long ago, it really wasn't, but if you... ago. It really wasn't, but a few weeks ago. But I wanted to share with the board that we've done a couple of things in reaction to some of the comments and questions that were shared by the board. We did remove the selection criteria that unintentionally created a potential bias towards our incumbent firm, and we rescored excluding that criteria, which was around experience working with our district. And despite excluding that, the firm of Anderson, Smith &amp; White still scored higher by a fairly large margin. And so, my recommendation that we move forward with renewing our contract with Anderson, Smith &amp; White remains. I did want the board to know that I did go back and take a look at the General Statute that governs the external audit, and there isn't anything in the General Statute that specifically states that we should rotate frequently. So, I wanted to feel confident about that and share that with you all. I also did a lot of conversations with different CFOs in our state and with Pam Satterfield, who is responsible for leading the NC ASBO organization, which is the North Carolina Association of School Business Officers. And while I think what I heard back was there's no requirement or even a best practice, but that we should make sure that there's rotation in the audit staff that does most of the compliance work. And I can assure you that that has been the case, at least over the past couple of years at Cabarrus County Schools. So, while our partner might remain the same, who's doing things from a review perspective and a financial statement compilation perspective, the folks that are doing the day-to-day compliance work and testing and verification, there is a rotation that happens there naturally. So, I just wanted to share those additional pieces of information with the board, and my recommendation stands.
Is there any discussion, board members, about the changes? Ms. Escobar?
I just want to say thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. It's hard to audit your friends, and so, it's good to know that they're big enough that they can rotate that out. And I think that our concerns before are being reached, and I do take into consideration that it's your recommendation, that you have, you're the one who has to work with them, and you understand what you need for us to be in compliance. So, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'll also say thank you for the additional information. I think that's helpful that we're having a different set of eyes look at our information and our data when they do the audits. So, that's, at least gives me some comfort. Thank you.
At this point, since we have had two discussions about this, we can either take action on this tonight, or we can put it to consent. Do you want to put it on action and go ahead and vote on it tonight? Okay, so, I need a motion to approve the audit service RFP results and contract selection.
I'll make the motion to approve that. So, I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, board members, that concludes the April 3 work session and public hearing on the budget. So, I now need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, board members, leadership team, our presenters, our SROs, and our public for being involved in our meeting this evening. We will see you again on April 17.